Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Happy New Year. Since we have a full house tonight, we're gonna go ahead and get started. If you can, please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag with us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
They ain't calling me in order.
Yes. Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order.
Seven oh three P M.
Okay, and roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Present.
Alderman Davis excused as absent. Alderman Spivey.
Here.
Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Mayor Ford.
Present.
Alderman Hudson.
Present.
All right, thank you. At this time, Pastor.
Yes, good evening. Happy New Year. As it is written, eyes have not seen, ears have not heard, neither has it entered the hearts of men that thinks which he has prepared for them that love him. We come thanking the Lord for a brand new year, as we come praying for our mayor, our council members, our fire department, our police department, all the great residents of this city. And we simply ask that may God bless the residents of Country Club Hills, may God bless our troops, and may God bless America. Amen.
All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, we will have the approval of the minutes. General proceedings.
Thank you, Mayor. General proceedings, approval of the administrative meeting minutes of the City Council, November ninth, twenty twenty-three. If I could just read them all off, attorney.
Yes.
Also, approval of the regular meeting minutes of the City Council, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and approval of administrative meeting minutes of the City Council, December fourth, twenty twenty-three. And I'm not for sure if, A, if I said administrative meeting, but correction, if so, administrative meeting minutes for November ninth, regular City Council meeting, November thirteenth, and administrative meeting, December fourth.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or corrections to those minutes? Okay, here are no corrections or comments. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have communications and reports by the mayor. Only report the mayor has is that we have a snowstorm on our way. We got a major game going tonight, and so we want to not prolong this meeting. We wanna go home. With that, city clerks report.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, to keep it brief, welcome back, Happy New Year, wishing everyone a safe and productive twenty twenty-four. Just wanna share a little bit of information, Country Club Hills Police Department has a prescription drug box in the lobby of the police department, so it's always good to drop that off. Please do not flush it down the toilet. Also, the Country Club Hills Police Department has a Citizens Academy, it's a four-week academy, and the information is on the city website, which is linked to the department website for those who are eighteen and older. The CRC is trying to promote the boot camp workout class. If you would like to participate in this class, please call the number at seven zero eight seven nine eight eight four nine seven and ask for Casey. City Hall will be closed Monday, January fifteenth, and will resume normal business hours on Tuesday, the sixteenth, at eight A M. It will be closed on the fifteenth due to the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior holiday, and for those who are fortunate to have that day off, please make sure it is a purpose-filled day. Last item, did you know that Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King's birth name was actually Michael? Good to know. So I do have a couple of tips and some facts over on the sheet on the information table, and that is the end of my report.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the committee reports. First committee we have tonight is the Finance Committee. Alderman Lockett, Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeking council's approval for the council pay up vote for January eighth in an amount of seven hundred five thousand five hundred nineteen dollars and one cents.
Second.
Spin probably motion and second. Are there any questions or comments? Here are no questions, comments, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is approval of an ordinance approving a long-term water sale purchase and service agreement by and among the village of Oaklawn and Cook County, Illinois, and other municipalities, and authorizing an execution delivery of said agreement.
Second.
Okay, just a little bit on that. Our contract with Oaklawn, our water contract with Oaklawn expires in August of this year, twenty twenty-four, and our attorney, John Murphy, have been working with the three municipalities, Country Club Hills, Matteson, and Olympia Fields.
Olympia Fields.
To get a current contract, okay? And it's been very successful, and through the many negotiations that we've had, including project manager Jerry back there, Finance Director Danielle, they've been involved in this process as well. We were able to save a few million dollars with this new contract, so it's a great savings, and so we are looking forward to this new contract with Oaklawn. Any questions?
And we'll pick that up in August, after August?
Well, we're gonna start it now, so.
Okay.
The contract, it's gonna start before August expires, so. Here are no, go ahead, head.
Few words. Our office represents the village of Matteson and Olympia Fields also, so John and myself were able to make a collective effort to minimize the legal costs in working out this contract for all three municipalities. And I believe Felicia's at Matteson tonight. This is on the agenda in Matteson tonight. Some of it was a bit bumpy, I have to tell you, and at least in the village of Matteson, we looked at different avenues, maybe to go a different way, and none were cost-effective, and none would ensure that we get Lake Michigan water, the quality of which we get today. So this is a thirty-year contract, and it also allows for expansion and what we call a redundancy of the system, in case, God forbid, anything should happen to the regular system, so it, and John sent you all a memo explaining the history of it, which he did a really good job, and very thorough, so I highly recommend passage of this tonight.
Yeah, redundancy is something that we've been looking for for years now, and finally Country Club Hills has that redundancy, so it's great. So, any other comments? No other comments, I hear none, so let's go with a roll call.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
That's the end of my report.
Okay, next, we have law and ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry, if we can back up, I need an ordinance number.
Certainly. Ordinance zero dash zero one dash two four.
So if we can, just revote it if we can, ordinance number zero dash zero one two four for the passage of the water, long-term water agreement with the city of Country Club Hills.
You don't have to revoke, we'll just insert the number.
Insert the number, thank you. Okay, end of my report.
All right, thank you. Next, we have law and ordinance, government operation, Alderman Hudson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. City Council, T B A on my next meeting, please.
Okay, Public Works and Utilities, Alderman Davis.
No report at this time.
Economic Development Planning and Zoning, Alderman Spivey, Chair.
Yes, Mayor. No report at this time, but we will be resuming the businesses of the month. The other four businesses that didn't get the letter, we will follow up with them either by the end of this month or the first of next month to proceed forward.
Okay.
End of my report.
Thank you. Education, Parks, and Recs.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to make a public apology to Eric Booker for mentioning that I couldn't find something on the website that was there, it was just a way to find it that kinda confused me. I'll make it quick so we get out of here. Rich Central, on the twelfth, twenty twenty-three, which was a get-together for freshmen, they had thirty-five volunteers came out. We sat and talked to them from different professions, different ways of life, listened to them talk about their future, and kinda guided them toward certain types of careers in this get-together. There were one-on-one conversation, and there were four different sets of freshmen. So we're trying to keep the freshmen focused on trying to understand which way they wanna go in life, so we get them in the freshman gear. It was about an hour each session, and I told them I came just to observe, but I end up getting people coming to me to talk, so I end up working. I also wanna take a minute to give prayer and meditation to Lewis B. Smith Junior. He's in the hospital, he's waiting for a heart. Mayor knows him very well.
Yes.
Okay? So maybe one quick minute of silence for. Okay, I wanna let the mayor know that I attended the senior night. Community sponsors was Mayor James Ford, Treasurer Stephen Burns, Alderman John Edwards of the First Ward, and Mr. Spivey of the Fourth Ward. The seniors were very proud to be able to have a function where the city supported it, and they enjoyed theyself. March the twentieth, I need the Chief of Police, the Chief of the Fire Department, to give me or have some people come to Rich Central South. I will provide you with a flyer, because we're gonna do it again, we're gonna have students come down, and it's gonna be sponsored by Country Club Hills and New Roots. So the aldermen that can't make it, maybe they could donate on some food for the vendors who, for the people who come to talk to the young people, and me and the mayor maybe work out something to help. I would love to see Carl come and the mayor come for at least a couple of hours, just to see how it works. And that date is March the twentieth. I'll give you a flyer with all other information, those in the back who wanna help me. Other than that, end of my report. Thank you for the opportunity to represent Country Club Hills.
All right, thank you. Also, just to piggyback on John, the gentleman, Mr. Smith, is a veteran, you guys probably know him, he's always around, City Hall's kinda walk on a cane sometimes. He's got a great house over there in the First Ward.
It's really big.
I mean, it's really nice.
His nickname is Sarge.
Yeah, he's a sergeant, and when you drive by his house, you'll know that's him, because he's got a statue of sergeant in his yard. So let's keep him in our prayers. Okay, and the other thing I wanted to say, I know that we had the Hillcrest Hawks, the cheerleaders, and the football team, right? I would like to see them come to one of our meetings so that we can recognize them, and if there's information, we can post on our Jemitrans out there, we'd love to do that too. But the cheerleaders and the football team, let's bring them separately, because I know so many of them, I can't handle them all at once, so let's work that out.
Yeah, I called Mr. Lockett, and I told him to let me know when they can schedule something, and then me and you and a few more people would take care of it. So I did contact him, and I believe he's waiting to get contact back by the people who run the team.
Okay, great.
I'm ready when you're ready, and Mr. Lockett is ready.
All right, at this time, I need a motion to open the floor to the public.
Motion, open the floor to the public.
Spin probably motion and second. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
We need a second.
Spivey.
Spivey.
Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
All right, motion carries, public. If you would like to address the council, please come to the mic. Limit your time to one minute, three minutes less. Close the floor to, oh, we got one. Okay.
Take your time.
Take your time. We'll wait for you.
Happy New Year to you all. Good evening to the aldermen and to the mayor. My name is Reverend Dr. Diane Simpson, and I live in the Fawn Ridge Development, forty-nine twenty, one hundred and seventy-ninth Street, and I have a couple of questions regarding What is the protocol of me getting through to the phone number to the City Hall? Every time I call, I get no one to speak to, and I leave messages, and I don't get returned calls, so I don't know what else to do, and sometimes I can't get out as much as I used to be able to do so, but I find that kinda disturbing, that I can't get through to anyone when I make phone calls to my City Hall. So I don't know how that can be handled, or what formality am I supposed to do in order to get to speak to someone and then get to the property department that I need to in order to communicate what I'm calling about? So that's one issue. Another issue is, well, reasons I was calling a lot was the second issue, is because I know, probably because of all of the warehouses, or whatever you call, that's been built and where the animals had their habitats, and now they're making their habitats in our backyards. You know, so there has been abundance of activity in our particular area. I'm also aware that it's been, if we are doing things to try to get them, keep them from coming into our facilities, we know that they are going in other areas, other areas of the community, and out here in Country Club Hills. And I was told too, that there are coyotes that they have been seeing, and we've seen them, not only have we seen them in the night, skunks, badgers, all kinds of animals I can't even recognize, and I know coyotes. Then we start seeing them come out eight o'clock, six o'clock, in the morning, ten o'clock, twelve o'clock, and so we're really concerned, you know, it's really concerned. So I don't know what you guys can do about that, but I have called animal, you know, whatever, protection animal, whatever, then whatever.
Animal control.
Garden control, and then they were telling me that that's something that the City Hall, the council, whatever, would have to make an ordinance for something, because some communities have some other programs regarding the animals that are in the wild that comes into our communities. So I don't know if that's something that you guys can look into for us, but I think for the protection of us all. And I'm very concerned, because you know, children be out on the bus stop and stuff too now, you know? And I go out to wanna walk around my house, and I can't do that very easily, and I'll be afraid that I wouldn't be able to get to a safe position if something does happen. But I do would hope that you guys protect this in consideration and advisement, and see if there's something that can be done to help us control these animals. And I don't know if it was thought about when their habitats were taken away from them, that, you know, that we needed to make some kind of arrangements for the animals, as well as letting the people know that need to do some things in order to protect their properties. We all have around, and we have those animal repellents, you know, that makes the sounds and do all of that, and the sprays, and we're doing it all the time, and sometimes we think we got it licked, and then they come again, they find a way to get around them and wait and whatever, they're very clever. So if you guys can help us out with addressing those issues in our community for the safety of us, and even though they might not do anything, too, we don't know, we're just scared sometimes. Yeah, so, yeah, those two issues, the communication and doing something about the animals and things around.
When you call City Hall and you don't get a response, you can always call seven nine eight three three eight eight. Seven nine eight three three eight eight.
This is.
That's my office.
Oh, oh, okay. All right, I was trying not to, I was trying to avoid calling you. And I also put a message on the website, on the guy's website? I even wrote a message in there, too. I didn't get a respond back.
And Mayor, may I be recognized?
Do you mind of that?
Pastor, after this is over, I will give you my personal phone number. You just called Tyrone, I'm your alderman.
Right, I know, well.
And I'll make sure you have my personal phone number, okay?
All right, because I called that number.
Don't call me for the animals now.
Well, that's what I called you for.
I give you mine.
Because we didn't know, we didn't know what else to do, we was just trying, because we couldn't get through to City Hall, we didn't know what else to do.
They're pretty busy, at a time I can't get through, they're real busy.
They're real busy.
But I make sure you get my phone number, and I can in turn be that liaison for you.
Okay, thank you.
Not a problem, Pastor.
The other thing, though, and I know, about the snow removal, you're not helping the seniors anymore with that?
No, the program's in effect.
I didn't get anything.
You gave me your water bill.
No, I didn't get it in my water.
You paid your water bill?
Oh, matter of fact, I paid my water bill month in advance, thank you.
The program is in effect, and it has to snow more than two inches.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, but I didn't get a flyer this time.
Check with City Hall.
And I didn't see it on the website. But I will do that.
We'll get it for you.
Okay.
And just in response to, whenever you call the county about wild animals, they always pass the buck to the municipalities, it's because the county years ago cut their budget, so for the whole Cook County, there's only six animal control officers in the whole county, which is crazy.
I called so many different people about those animals, but that's why I said, let me come to the meeting, because I think it needs to be made known, you know, to you guys more publicly, that we need to look into that, not only for our sake, but the animals' sake, too, because we do still need the animals, you know?
All right, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you. For bringing that up to us. Next person.
Cliff Graham. Concerning the water contract, will there be a, what would be the increase of our water bill per gallon? Looking at it here, it says five dollars and twenty-seven cents per one thousand gallon. How much will we be paying from this point on? Would it be an adjustment, the charges and the fees that's?
Gallons is based on what you use in your household.
Right, but I'm just saying, I'm sure the contract, the thirty-year contract agreement, I'm not, maybe I came in on telling of it, but you said thirty-year contract, and for us to last Oaklawn facility, not Indiana, right?
Correct, because we don't have a pipeline that comes from Indiana.
Right, right, that's correct.
To Illinois.
And we had also, didn't we donate some fees, or was the tracking out of our water
bill for the potential to get that line done in Indiana? Am I correct?
The money that comes out of the water bill is for the improvements for Country Club Hills.
Okay.
So the money that, if it's five dollars and eighty cents per household, that money is, put it into an account, and that money is reserved for the improvements for the water system.
Right, so we never made a tentative subtraction on our water bill, relation to trying to get the next one with Hammond and Homewood?
Well, yeah, we went that route to try to work something out, because we thought it was cheaper, but someone has to pay to run the pipeline from Hammond to Country Club Hills, or Hammond to whoever they connect with. Then you still have to.
But did we allocate, yes or no, did we allocate money towards, to go toward that pipeline that was gonna be developed in Indiana?
No, we didn't. We allocated dollars for the research to see if it was feasible.
And how much was that?
That's where that money went.
And how much was that?
I think it was like fifteen thousand, something like that.
Fifteen twenty thousand.
Fifteen twenty thousand for that. That was to, between the municipalities, to see if it was feasible to get our water to Hammond, from Hammond to South Chicago hikes, from Chicago hikes to Homewood.
And was it feasible?
No, it was not. That's why we signed the contract with Oaklawn.
And so we have that on record, too, those, that research, those.
I'm sorry?
We have the research saying that we did our research, I do have to pull a Freedom Information, I have that research available.
Put in Freedom, yeah, whatever.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, they, they have, and it was a combined, it wasn't just us, it was combined with the other municipalities that was interested at the time.
I'm familiar, I'm familiar, I'm just trying to know that we've been on this for about two, three, four years, whatever.
Well, we've been on it for longer than that.
Right, I know.
At least fifteen years.
Longer than that, and that's what I'm saying, so now it's come down, so it's no other increase gonna be burdened on the residents, this new contract, or is it gonna be an increase, or whatever it's gonna be?
Will not be an increase at this point. Now, your water will continue to go up, because, but not at this point. I can't tell you there's never gonna be an increase, because the water rates from Chicago continue to rise, and so we have to make sure of that.
So the tentative agreement with Oaklawn, though, is that rate locked, is that adjustable?
No, it's never, it's never a locked rate, because when the city of Chicago raises their rate, and they, Oaklawn gets their water from Chicago, if Chicago raises their rates, then Oaklawn has to raise their rates.
It's a change.
And they pass it on to us that.
Right, right.
We have to raise our rates.
So when we're doing the comparison of the Hammond research, that should reflect the differences of why you choose, choosing Oaklawn and Chicago over Hammond?
No, it's because we've already, we already operate out of the pipeline.
I understand.
So in order, in order for us to do, come from Hammond, then each municipality probably have to come up with somewhere about twelve million dollars, just for the construction of the pipeline to come. That's not including other engineering fees and things like that.
Exactly, so that was the homework that was done with the fifteen thousand dollars, to see that it wasn't feasible.
Correct.
Okay, and so that should be, okay, thank you very much.
All right, anyone else? Please approach the podium. If there's no one else.
I'd like to make a motion to close the floor to the public.
Nope, I thought we had another one. Okay, go right ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to close the floor to the public.
Second.
All right, spin probably motion and second. Roll call.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries. At this time, we will have the automatic reports, and these reports, we'll start with Alderman Hudson tonight.
Ah, starting with the best, forget the less. Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to say Happy New Year to all the residents of C.C. Hills, all the employees and their family, as well as my elected officials and their family on the dais. I also like to say happy retirement to our own Charles McCarthy, that's Chucky, who actually gave this beautiful city thirty-five years of service, and he worked for Public Works, he retired just a couple of weeks ago. Mayor, as of one four twenty-four, January fourth, work has finally begun on one hundred and seventy-ninth place in Fawn Ridge regarding the sinkholes. I believe M. and J. is the contractor for this project. This is something that's been going on prior to me taking my seat here on the dais, this has been an ongoing issue, but I see the work is starting to happen, and it was a very serious issue, it was sinkholes behind the residents' home, so that work is finally being started. The end date, I have no idea yet, but I will keep tabs on that to report that to the residents of Fawn Ridge.
Okay.
Mayor, something else, the Operational Center, the O.C., I made a visit over there last week, and it's in dire need of repair. I know you understand, it's interior and exterior. Our center need emergency work, Mayor. It needs some work to be done, if we can, when we come up to the budget or where we find some money, because this is an area that represent us, when residents stop and view that they consider something nice to walk into as reflecting of the city of Country Club Hills. And also, Pastor, I would give you my personal phone number, and like I've been doing for many years prior, before and after I was on the dais, and you can call me, because also, it's pretty busy up there, the ladies and the gentlemen, that phone rings all day, all day, and they're pretty busy. So I give you my card, and you have a question, concern, I could be the liaison for you, if that'd help you. Sorry. Let's up to the mayor.
If, yeah, after the meeting, if you guys.
I would meet with you after the meeting. And also, as I always say, people in residence, if you see something, say something. Call nine one one. End of my report, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Lockett.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna thank. Thank you, Mayor, um, I just wanna thank, um, all the, um, employees here that actually put their heart into their work, and does a great job, not only for the city, but for the residents. Um, we have a very dedicated Public Works Department, Building Department, Police and Fire. These guys, they, they, they treat you like family, uh, whether it's police, fire, Public Works, they come to your house, you're like family, too.
That's right, that's right.
And, and they take pride in their work, and I just wanted to thank you all for a great job, and, um, I know people live a long time and work a long time, but I don't ever wanna see any of you guys retire, so, hang in there. Um, just wanna remind the seniors that, um, the snowstorm is coming in that, so you wanna prepare for it. Um, make sure your drive is shoveled if you're coming out, or you got some, some salt, if you ain't got no salt yet, make sure somebody gets to the store, because whenever they say sto- snowstorm, the local, um, hardware's net sell out of salt right away. So, if you do, just do like my mama used to do, and take that Morton salt, and sprinkle it out there, and then, she had plenty of it in the cabinet, but I think it worked better than regular salt. And, um, with that, I was, end of my report, happy new year to everyone.
Alderman Spivey?
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, I just wanna say, um, happy new years to my colleagues. It's great to see everyone here today, in good health, thank you to, uh, Country Club Hills and the Four Four. Looking forward to resuming our Four Four meetings this month. Uh, thank you to Public Works and the Police Department for all you do here for me in the Country Club Hills and the Four Four. End of my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Edwards?
Um, happy new years to everyone, um, I will have an unofficial meeting, uh, February the eighth. I'll give you the time later, 'cause I gotta work it out with the schools. Can't have unofficial meeting?
The clerk is saying, what's that? Unofficial, what does that mean?
That means that if I don't have an alderman, I just had the schools out to work with, to set up the date for the next.
Oh, you're having a meeting with schools?
Right.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, unofficial, okay.
Okay.
That way I don't have to depend on nobody trying to get in, okay?
Yeah.
Um, February eighth. Okay, um, I would like to, um, let the mayor know, one of my goals this year is to bring in all the school districts and get them to work together from K through, uh, eighth, and then to high school. So I'm gonna invite all the schools to the meeting in March the twentieth, so if they like it, then they can set up the same type of program. Also, I wanna thank Public Works, um, this year I plan to get out there and work with them to make sure that we cover what we supposed to cover. I will give my time and effort to make my neighborhood better, and make sure that I get some things done that should be done. And, um, I'd like to thank the City Council for having an opportunity to serve the public, end of my report.
Thank you. Pedro?
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanna say happy new year to everybody, the employees of Country Club Hills, and, uh, also, the, uh, I'm gonna switch roles, uh, Mayor, the supervisor committee man says, thank you for, uh, participating in the Southland, for the Country Club Hills thing, we, they really appreciate, uh, our participation. And also, the thanks, uh, the city for, uh, I, I got the invoice for the transportation intergovernment agreement, and we just, uh, that's why I was late voting on that at the township, and we appreciate the intergovernment agreement that Country Club Hills and Rich Township has, we appreciate that, and the residents really like that, and expanding, uh, we saw the numbers, and it is expanding, uh, the, helping the seniors, and it's really working out, appreciate that, end of my report.
All right, thank you.
Not to mention that it saved the city's money also.
Yes, compared to what we had before, so it's a great, great partnership. Also, just to mention that Southland project that we had with, uh, Rich Township, we had ten families representing, um, Country Club Hills, thanks to our clerk who did all the shopping, most of the shopping, I think she had helpers, I'm not sure, but she shopped for all ten families, and we were able to present them with gifts at that event, so, thank you all for that, um, and Mat- uh, Madison, the city of, Village of Madison hosted the event, so, it was great.
And a special thank you to Larry Huggins, who putting that on, 'cause he's the gentleman.
Yes.
That started this, uh, it was, uh, actually it started in the city.
Yes.
And it worked its way to the Southland, and, uh, Larry Huggins was.
Yes.
Larry Huggins is the major part of that, making that happen in the mirror, and Treasurer was there, we had a really good time.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, yeah.
So, Alderman, if you.
Did those every, uh, did that ever get on the, uh, webpage? I don't know, I never took it, got a chance to look at it, but.
I don't know, did they get on the webpage?
The photos.
Photos, any other photos?
You did, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I saw a photo.
Okay.
Treasurer said it was there.
Okay, all right, great, so, um, with that said, um, just wanna let everybody know that, uh, I wish you, um, happy new year, prosperous new year, and I'm looking forward to working with you all, uh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, with that said, uh, I need a motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, before we adjourn, um, I'd like to take a moment of silence and keep, um, Mayor Ford, um, family and our, and our prayers, his wife, his wife's father passed away.
Oh, sorry.
And, um, they laid him to rest just.
Saturday.
Saturday, so if, just a moment of silence, and keep the Ford family in your prayers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, for adjournment.
Second.
It's been probably motion and second, roll call, please.
Certainly, Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Time is seven thirty-eight P.M.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, you would like to speak to the mayor, the council, please come forward.